...of silence. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and as always, we'll start with our mission statement. Transforming education, inspiring life, empowering all. Have you believed them?
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic of Oregon fans, on nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord is with us.
This is a regular meeting with executive session at the Board of School Trustees of the Lake Ridge New Tech Schools, Lake County, Indiana, December ninth, twenty twenty four, at six oh eight P. M. in the Lake Ridge School Board Meeting Room. Let the record state the board members and the superintendent is present. Let the record show the administrators that are present. Consider the attached accounts payable vouchers and the December sixth, twenty twenty four payroll of payment. May I have a moment? Motion by Mr. Roberts, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Now we're going to move on to consider the Treasury Report as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Mees, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Roberts. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Consider the old National Athletic Complex Donation Fund Treasury Report as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Roberts, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Next, we're going to move on to consider the old National Insurance Fund Treasury Report as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Mees, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries. And next, we're going to consider the minutes of the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four school board meeting. May I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Mees, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor? I mean, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Doctor Shirley.
All right, thank you. Today, everyone is being here. Uh, under the superintendent's school board member report, we always, uh, discuss our goal areas. Academic, all all learners will continuously demonstrate academic growth. Safety, we will provide a safe and secure learning environment for all. Equity, we will provide a positive, inclusive, and equitable environment for all. Communication, we will improve communication and strengthen relationships from internal and external. Finance, we will advocate to increase the financial resources of the corporation to provide an outstanding school environment and opportunities for our student staff and students. And then, evening, we have asked Mr. Blachovich to provide an update on how you're going to do it. So at this point, um, Blachovich can come forward.
As I surely said, I was announced to be providing a state school board, so that's why. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Chris Blachovich, and I have been serving at Godman High School. Principal, I'm also a nineteen ninety two graduate, and I'm also a K twelve public educated Lake Ridge, uh, school kid. Um, a person in the community, so I, uh, know and understand, uh, I would like to say, uh, from another angle of what, uh, our community needs and wants and what our kids need and want. So, uh, before I tell you, I also want to introduce some of our leadership team at the high school. Uh, this is Mr. Andrew Fredris, he's our team of students. Uh, this is Melissa Claude, she's one of our instructional coaches. This Rachel Need, she's another one of our instructional coaches. And then we also have Mr. Aaron Carter, who's, uh, with us today, uh, he's our assistant principal. And then we have, uh, Sarah Vitar, she's our athletic director, and she's at the school right now. We have, we have a few events, uh, we get right now, so maybe after the morning, we could just go on. All right, so we're going to go ahead. So we're going to touch on a few points, um, here that, uh, we are, you know, we're all responsible as, uh, school administrators, school educators, uh, for our kids, our community, uh, at large. And so, as a parent of public school kids, uh, as of a couple of years ago, I was mostly interested in how my kids were safe, you know, at school and then everything else. So, uh, that's why we're starting with, uh, maintaining a safe school environment. And, uh, we're required by the State of Indiana and in our school improvement plan to have a plan for maintaining a safe school environment. So, at, uh, the forefront of maintaining a safe school environment is having a supportive and inclusive culture. And what does that mean? That means that we make intentional efforts to know our kids, to know our teachers, to know our staff, whether they're clerical, whether they're counselors, whether they're kitchen staff, whether they're custodial, uh, to know our parents as much as possible, uh, so we all feel connected. That is at the forefront of maintaining a safe school environment. And we do that, uh, at the high school every day. From welcoming our students or staff into the school, uh, we make, uh, we have a plan for going around the school uh, to check in, uh, with teachers, with kids. Um, if you would just take a look at, you know, just in the morning, a student arrival, uh, we all have designated locations in the school. So we have someone from our leadership team that has eyes on, uh, you know, most, every section of our building. Under that, um, as many of you know, we have a safe and secure entry project going on, uh, right now at the high school. Some probably just saw rent structure in front of the school where we're going to be receiving a canopy. We're all excited about that. Uh, but beyond that, our entire office is being renovated. So for those of you that are familiar, you know, the way our office used to look, it was just a big, large space. Uh, so the architects came in and said, you know, we can definitely, uh, make more use of this office space, um, and to make it more secure. So, uh, once this project is in work, about close to completion, uh, the aim is to be in there in January once we return from our break. Uh, but you will notice that, uh, there's going to be, uh, a multi-layer of security prior to being allowed into the school. That's everyone, uh, at the main entrance. So, we have, um, you'll be buzzed into the school. And then the second layer there will be, which we already have right now and is in use, is a raptor system where you have to put your I. D. in, and our main office secretary sees your I. D., uh, whether you have a state I. D. or driver's license. If you don't have that, uh, we do ask, you know, for the person to get their I. D. and come back. And then, after that, once they're cleared with that raptor system, they will enter into a main office section holding area. They still won't have, um, access to the building. Mrs. McCullough, who's our office secretary, or whoever that secretary is at that time, if she's away from her desk, will have to clear the vision. You know, sometimes if we know the same person, you know, Chris Blachovich walks in and may be a little elevated on that day, may not allow, you know, Chris to go into the building at that time. So that's going to be the third layer of security before they're bused in to go where they need to go. Um, so that, uh, you know, will be the priority for everyone who comes into our building. We have our S. R. O. program, for those of you that don't know what that acronym stands for, School Resource Officer Program, and that's in conjunction with the Lake County Sheriff's Department. So in our district, uh, we have an officer stationed at each of our schools. Uh, the district, uh, Resource Officer, Ryan Res, um, is here every day. And then we have officers who, um, uh, come in, you know, on a rotating basis. So, uh, we are, uh, we do know them, and we have relationships with the S. R. Os that are working in our buildings. And they also have relationships with our students, uh, to make sure that we're building those bonds between them so they know that they have a familiar face to go to. In addition to that, let me grab a lot of your school safety specialists. So, uh, each of our schools has one at high school. Uh, we are all, you know, all, uh, many of us are trained in school safety by the Indiana Department of Education. And those trainings, uh, can take place virtually all year long, they're virtual training. Um, there are school safety specialist trainings that are held in Indianapolis. Uh, a big one, once a year, it's a two-day training, and there are school safety specialists throughout the country uh, that are invited in, uh, to just talk about best practices, uh, you know, and how to maintain a safe school environment. And, you know, uh, God forbid in the event of emergency, you know, what the best practice is. Uh, we have an M. T. S. S. team, uh, that's a volunteer support. Uh, I'll get more into that in the conversation, uh, describing what that means. The school counseling staff, so outside of traditional school guidance counselors, uh, we have a mental health counselor, uh, now at our school that's supported by a grant. We also have a social worker, a full-time social worker that's supported by a grant. And then I'll get into some of the other partnerships that we're in, uh, partnership with, uh, to, um, assist in that counseling as well. Student voice, we allow, uh, students through different organizations and clubs, uh, to voice concerns uh, or, you know, make any comments, uh, suggestions, uh, or bring up questions, uh, just about how to make our school better. And so, uh, our leadership team provides that opportunity for students to meet with us and, you know, offer those suggestions. Restorative practices, if anyone's not familiar with that term, it basically just means restoring a relationship. Uh, as people, as human beings, sometimes our relationships will go sideways. Uh, but we have a culture that, at the high school, and I'm sure, uh, that we have it in our district as well, uh, that, you know, there isn't anything that we can't work toward to make it right. Uh, so restorative practices can include, uh, you know, bringing two parties together with mediators, uh, to talk about whatever the situation is, to see if we can, you know, restore that such, uh, relationship, uh, you know, to a better level and whatever it is. Uh, resource periods, we have, uh, resource periods, some of us may go from our school days of, uh, the homeroom. But, uh, we beep that up, uh, to include some curriculum during those times. So at the high school, we hold three of those resource periods a week, uh, they're forty-five minutes long. Uh, two of those days we reserve for social emotional learning. Uh, so some of those topics are how to regulate, uh, yourself when you become a little unhinged, uh, or maybe, uh, you know, dating violence, what that may look like, uh, what some abusive, uh, language may look like, uh, to be able to spot that. How do you help someone that may be in that situation? And then one of those periods, uh, we reserve for college and career readiness, uh, and that's provided to all students, uh, during that time. So every kid has an opportunity to see that in their classroom because this very board that you're looking at right now is in all of our classrooms uh, that teachers can project to, uh, that we send any type of presentation, you know, whether it's from any of our offices. Uh, we have partnerships with counseling services, so if you ever go, Infinity, uh, they are, uh, a counseling group uh, that we partner with, uh, that we can use for, you know, extended counseling services that, uh, maybe some of our full-time counseling staff can't get to. Uh, we have a partnership with Lake County Sheriff's Department, they send over counselors once a week, uh, for any, uh, like drug abuse, counseling, or conflict resolution. So for example, uh, you know, vaping is a real thing, uh, in all of our schools across the board, from coast to coast. And so when we catch them, in addition to whatever consequences that we may, we may, we may need to, um, you know, issue a court address through the handbook, uh, we want to couple that with an educational component. So to make sure that they know how it's affecting them health-wise, how it's going to affect them socially, and then how it's going to affect them in the pocketbook later on when you're working for money and you're spending, you know, those dollars on that. Uh, so they come in and talk to them about that, and then also a conflict resolution. Anyone that may get into any verbal or physical qualifications, we require the kids, once they return from, if they're issued a suspension, you know, length of suspension, once they come back, one of the components is they must go through a conflict resolution course with them or us or them. Regional Mental Health Center as well, Edgewater is another, um, partnership that we have, uh, for mental health services. And then Community Health Net, which is our community health center that's attached to the high school, um, where, you know, students can access as well for medical needs. Uh, so another thing that, you know, me as a parent, I was, uh, very concerned about parental involvement. You know, in, in this day and age, uh, this isn't the seventies, the eighties, where we need to, you know, be somewhere present to receive information. Uh, you know, this is, these are the days of Redbug, this is the days of Uber, you know. So, uh, we need to make sure that we're reaching out, uh, in many forms, that we're making ourselves available and using the technology accordingly. Uh, so, uh, some of these bullet points, you'll notice that, yes, they are, you know, uh, physical in nature, but, uh, we do have, uh, many forms, you know, of communication that you can take advantage of to be able to, uh, reach it. So, uh, I don't want to read through them verbatim, but, you know, we do have an annual public meeting for our Title One program, open houses, parent-teacher conferences. Uh, teachers are required to hold contact logs all year long with, you know, with whoever they, they, uh, speak with, or parents come in, you know, for any type of conversation, uh, they have for team teachers or individual teachers. We have P. L. nights, uh, our school messenger, if you're not familiar with that, uh, that's the way that we engage, uh, from the school and then, you know, like messages out to our parents or groups of parents. Social media, everyone knows what social media is, and sometimes it's good, most times it's bad if other conventions don't know how to use it accordingly. Uh, but we have Facebook, uh, account, uh, that, you know, we, they, uh, you know, grant the information on this. We have our learning management system, it's ECHO. So, uh, these are the days now that we submit, uh, work and learn on a, on a, uh, learning management. So it's something new, and they've been around for, you know, more than twenty years. Uh, at the university level, we probably are blackboard. Same concept, teachers can upload their assignments, uh, you know, so everything is, is there for, for the kids to work twenty-four seven. You know, so they don't have to necessarily complete a physical, uh, assignment. So that's one of the benefits in terms of technology appropriately. Our student management system, so that's Power School. The student management system, I don't want to get into much of that. Basically, what you need to know about student management system is where we track attendance and where we track discipline, and then we'll retract demographics, where the kids live, uh, parents' phone numbers, emergency contact. For example, if someone is not listed as an emergency contact, and we have this all the time, where a parent may, you know, need someone to come pick their kid up, uh, and, you know, that adult is not listed as an emergency contact, we cannot release, um, you know, the student to that person, even though the person who knows the kid, the kid knows that person. Uh, typically, we have ways around that because if we establish those relationships and then we give, uh, get that parent out of line, give verbal consent, uh, then, you know, we release. But that's, uh, our student management system. Uh, we conduct parent surveys, um, Title One activities, extracurriculars. You know, these are very important for kids and for the community to have connection to the school. So not just sports, uh, but, you know, band choir, uh, for those of you that didn't know, I was also in the high school band, so I know about that, and I'm still a musician, so I love that. Uh, that's still, you know, having those opportunities to have kids connected to the school means a lot. Uh, because, uh, for kids, you know, just, um, going to school every day, academics, if you forgot, even though some of those, you know, learning opportunities can be exciting, they get bored. Uh, and research shows that if you're involved in extracurricular activities, you're going to do better academically. So we encourage our kids to get involved into something. Coffee with the principal, so we started this, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, so we meet once a month. And that's just a, you know, tabletop discussion, uh, getting sponsored by our communities and schools partnership. And they, you know, get some donuts, some coffee, right across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, get to come in and chat with me, and anything and, you know, everything under the sun. Uh, typically, I have an agenda that we'll cover, uh, but, you know, I do leave it open at the end to, uh, discuss, you know, any concerns that, um, you know, someone may have. Uh, so it's kind of like a monthly verbal suggestion box, uh, for community members so we can, uh, make sure that we just get better every day. And then last but not least, I put my name there, call or email me, or any team member in our high school. Uh, if you call, and sometimes you don't get an answer right away, uh, you know, we have limited number of clerical that answer the call, and that phone rings, all came on. So you can leave a message, you can email, but someone will get back. So just a little bit of, uh, stats about the school. Uh, our enrollment is at six hundred and twenty, and then you can just take a look at some breakdowns there, gender, many are reduced, slide, or special ed population, median population. And so you can see there that ninety percent of our students, with the exception of the nine that are reduced, overwhelmingly, our students qualify for, uh, pre-gradsch, uh, according to their socioeconomic status. So if you take a look at special ed, you know, that's almost twenty percent. So if you look at it as an educator, one in every five kids in our building are students special needs. And then also, I just wanted to bring attention to our out-of-district. At the high school, we have the highest number of out-of-district students, and there's a reason for that. The reason is that most parents, when high school comes along, they want to make sure that their kids are getting, and I'm just going to say with general term, a better education than what they have. We all know that in, in life, one of the most, one of our, one of the most important questions is compared to what? Um, so their comparison is that our school is better than where, wherever they are currently in terms of academics, in terms of safety, in terms of offerings, um, and everything, you know, above and beyond that. Uh, so, you know, one in about two in our school are outlive outside of our district. So our model for teaching and learning, the word tech just throws everywhere. It just does, it does. It threw me off twelve years ago when I came back home after teaching, uh, in Maryville for about seven years. Uh, I was also an administrator in Chicago Central High School. I was a assistant principal there, I was a assistant principal at Hammond, and then I got the opportunity to come back home, and this is where I'm going to be, hopefully, until I'm very, very great. Uh, and so, anyway, new tech. Please don't be thrown off by that. It doesn't mean just technology. It, it encompasses those four bullet points. A meaningful and equitable instruction. Purposeful assessment, what are we assessing on? Are we assessing on what we're teaching? Are we assessing formative assessments throughout, you know, the grade period, throughout our semester, on what the state is going to assess? And then the third bullet point is formative and inclusive culture, culture. And obviously, college and career readiness. Now, when we say career as well, you know, we're not forcing everyone to go to college. Yes, we'll say there's an opportunity for a better standard of living with whatever education or training you have. And so those are the four focus areas for our, uh, new tech model for teaching and learning. Yes, every student in our building has a laptop, every teacher in our, and staff member has a laptop. And yes, we do use tools, uh, in order to educate, you know, our kids and to improve planning, instruction, learning, and assessment. Our curriculum resources, uh, and I apologize if you can't see those, uh, but if you take a look at that, and I'll just bring attention here real quick, I'll, um, for all of our classes, that's, you know, core discipline and we, you know, our electric courses as well. P. B. L. just stands for project-based learning. P. R. B. L. stands for problem-based learning, which is in math. ECHO is our learning management system. Eight-step process is how we evaluate our planning, teaching, and learning. For math, we're bringing on a new resource to help with improving our math scores. It's called the Flushable Map. By Cyd O'Neil, he's a killer string. It's called the Flushable. And then E. L. A., we have another resource, uh, called Readable English. Uh, our computer science courses, they, they use Code H. S., uh, where they're learning coding. And then our world languages and our four disciplines are using Mentum, and that's a program for recovering planets. So any students have a credit efficient, or they may have come in, credit efficient, you know, for example, they came in at the junior or senior, and they did receive some freshman software credits, they have that for those. Our assessment, uh, interims just mean that it's a form of a formative assessment. Let me just explain what a formative is. It means like a dipstick, like let's check, see what we're learning. That's a formative assessment. A diagnostic is at the beginning, so when you go to the doctor, when you go and you panic, a diagram, and that's what we do at the beginning. And then we use formative, check-ins, and then the sumative is the cube at the end, and that's like vital tech, right? So these are our formative, our So these are our formative, our interoms, you know, make it more clear of what that means. But interim assessment happen every, you know, board of finals, where we check what the students are learning. And then from there, do we have to shift our instructional practices for some of our kids to make sure that they're improving what's the problem, right? That's, that's the idea and the purpose of the interim. NWDA is one of those assessments that we use for diagnosing, and then doing another check in the middle, which is at the semester, and then again at the end of the year to see if we see an upward trend, right? Or did it black line? And if it's going down, something's wrong, right? And that's what we need to catch while we're administering the program. WIDA is for our EL population. AP is advanced placement courses, which we have a number of offerings at the high school. I'm proud of that, and I'm going to go see some of those courses that are offered. The PSAP is the free, you know, SAP course, or sorry, something, that's administered to all of our, you know, eighth grade, ninth grade, fifth grade, and even our eleventh grade kids at the beginning of the school year. October, I think it was October. Four or six, I believe it was early. That's for to show how they're going to perform on their SAP and what they need to work on to get better score on it. Obviously, the SAP, we're all good with that. IAM is for our special ed population. So this is just an overview of the suite of assessment, right? So PSAP is administered to eighth and ninth grade graders throughout the state. This right here is national merit qualifying exam, right? So any junior that meets the benchmark here can qualify for national merit scholarship. And then SAT, we're going to administer that. But this is to all the eleventh grade. And every eleventh grader in the state will get it. So just some quick facts about our grade nine. I tried looking at all my parents. So our PSAP grade nine, I know this looks like just a lot, like, you know, fire over there on the screen, but this was administered in October. There were one hundred and eighteen testers. Now, we have about a hundred and sixty, right? So you may be asking why one hundred and eighteen? Some were enrolled after the annual re-assignment. Some were absent, and that were, you know, minimum grade eight or以下. Some did not take this after our school was gone. So this is what we really were able to capture in that part. So if you take a look, the benchmark for reading and writing is four ten. Our. Benchmark at four ten. You see our average score right there, we were at three sixty ten. Benchmark at four fifty for math, we're at three thirty, right? So if you take a look at the averages here, we're four and four below, we're one and four off the line. Again, what applies most for the function, question is compared to what? So state averages, all public school. And these are public schools, by the way, who have different socioeconomic backgrounds. And I just want to make a mention that, I think it was about four or five years ago, that largest per capita income in our state was established in town. St. John. It was even ahead of Cardinal. But that's including schools like that, right? They have all of the resources that they need. State averages in reading and writing, they were seventeen above the benchmark. So they didn't blow it out of the water. In math, they were thirty-eight below. Now, county members' state averages? Sixty-one below, seventy-four below, yes, yes, one. We got to make sure that we're improving them. So what does that mean? For SAT, here are the benchmarks. And then what does it mean to meet that benchmark? It's seventy-five percent chance of earning a C or better in a college in your country, right? So that's one of the reasons why we take SAT, because that tells us what the kids champion, earning a C or better in any country or college. So these are grades ten and eleven. Same thing, two hundred and fifty-three testers. Benchmark again, same thing, four sixty-five, ten, three ninety-seven. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just. These are different benchmarks. The PSAP for grades ten and eleven is a different level. Here, our average total score is seven sixty-six. The state average is eight ninety-nine, we're one thirty-three below. However, if you take a look at here, the top score that you can receive on an SAT is a fifteen twenty. So the state average is pretty low compared to the top student. And we're right around that area. Here are reading and writing, once again, how much we're below compared to right here, state averages. Now, they are on track for reading and writing. But math, they're below. So statewide and nationwide, we have a problem with math. You may think, you know, you may think that, well, kids just don't understand math. Not necessarily. Because again, this has to tie with what our curriculum is. We've never had SAT as a graduate qualifying exam for what we're held accountable for. Never, mistake of the past. We had ICE step. And prior to ICE step, graduated prior to ICE step, which I did, didn't have a degree. All you needed was, you could say, you did enough work, that you can give that credit. That's how we prepare, and we'll get it back. So I, next thing. Grade nine, same thing. This is our PSAP, showing how they did in comparison to all the eleventh graders throughout the state. It's kind of all the same kind of story. See here, again, state average, we're all public school. Below, they are above here, but we got more work to do there as well. But ours, our, our scores. It's like. Unbelievable. Never breaks that. My grandpa. So everyone do you can check on. So with reading and writing, we show the same averages as the state when we compare it to the state. We have better scores in our reading and writing than in math. So I think you can all agree that growth, improvement, getting better is important, right? In anything that we do, whether it's our health, whether it's our education, whether it's our finances, just want to get better. And so I want to bring attention to the number of students that show growth. And while we compare, so are we comparing, you know, half the staff or the, or the children? Take a look here, you can see these four, twenty twenty-three of October, twenty twenty-four of October. Sixty-eight of our one hundred and fifty juniors, so a little bit more than half. Show growth in reading and writing. Forty-four showed growth in math. And by the way, this includes students who only sat for this test that were at county met this year and last year. So remember, sometimes when kids come in, they did a picture test at their previous school. We showed a twenty-three point gain, and sixty-two showed overall growth. Same thing here in reading and writing. About sixty-four percent there. We did show negative growth in math. Overall, the average, right? But in terms of individual students showing some growth, an upward trend, forty-four of you showed that growth. So these are our benchmark. This is our school, Sky Met. That's faith. This is the nation. So this is showing benchmark performance. Now, if you look at our school, you'll say, and that's pretty low. I'm sorry, they got that, that met benchmark in both. The met benchmark in one, right, one benchmark, and the met no benchmark. But look at how high it is in the state and the nation as well. Pretty high. So we have to take steps in order to move, to move towards improving these benchmarks here. Again, overall, our PSAP from fall now is making a difference. And this again, shows you the objection of how you're going to perform on spring essay. So this is now fall of twenty twenty-three. With spring essay. We had seventy-eight students, sixty-two percent that showed growth in reading and writing. That's, that's pretty phenomenal. From fall to spring. Now, you'll think, well, that's a happy year. In terms of school days, it's not a lot. Not a lot. So the kids and the teachers and administrators and everyone, parents, you know, I think did a good job. And yes, you can get better. Math, I have my good. So root causes tie to slower academic growth, and she, like, you know, think about that, someone asked me. Why are we showing slower growth? There's a lot of, a lot of, these are not excuses. On how we bad. So one of the reasons, COVID nineteen. Just think about what that. We had a couple of years, just, I'm almost like non-instruction. Non-instruction version. But the kids were not in front of, in a belt. They were losing out socially. And so quality event of instruction for our littles at the elementary and the middle school was hard. Maybe at the high school, and then at college, you know, yeah, a little more independent. But at the elementary, that was tough. The kids were tough. And that's why we saw those scores from the country that are luck, because of that lack of instruction that COVID nineteen brought. We have high transients in our district. And that's pretty common of school districts with higher rear-reduced lunch population. And some of the reasons are that either divorce, some kids, you know, are considered homeless. Some kids are going in to live with grandma and grandpa because of substance abuse at home. So those are reasons why we have transients. I didn't look up the numbers in my college report, this is me here. But one of them, maybe prior to COVID nineteen, I think they're last time in the doubt. And we were about forty percent of our kids were in and out. Like, they didn't leave, they never come back. They left, and they came back. They're leaving, they don't come back. So then we have a gap in construction, right? Higher teacher turnover at the elementary and middle school. This is not, you know, putting them on blast at all, but this is just an effect of that. Over eighty percent of the elementary staff branded. Almost about the same in the middle school. So then when you think about consistency, there is none. And then when you look at how many teachers are now having gone through a additional teacher preparation program. We're teaching them. Those kids eventually may break that back, but we just have a reason. Current in district ninth grade. For the last three or four years, and just correct me if I'm wrong, I think we looked, we looked at this down. They, eighty-five percent of their teachers were not like traditionally less. Eighty-five percent of current ninth grade in the last three or four years. I think this ninth grade lack of a nice, grand teacher model. And then also, in this regard, this is a student entering the high school with a crucial bad. This is a little snapshot of what our NWDA scores look like. If you look at this for a second, here, that blue, this is like above average, right? This is, by the way, this is our diagnostic test. This was administered on between August twenty-first and August thirteenth. So we were only in school like a week. That's what we do when our first diagnostic. So we want to see where the ninth graders came in, what do you know? So where do we need to take them? Ninth graders that came in, sixty-four percent are two or more grade levels below. We haven't touched them. Two or more grade levels below in reading and math. That means seventh, sixth, fifth grade level at first. Ninth grade approaching or at grade level, about seventeen percent. So they may be eighth grade, maybe ninth. Then we have about twenty percent of the average. And then, or the high average. And then what this means here is that thirty-four students, twenty-six percent are at grad grade level or higher. So these are the kids that we can say, hey, like, you have the skill that the state says a ninth grader should have in order to benefit from. In order to benefit the class. Thirty-four out of our one hundred and sixty-five. So then, uh, we're all administrators and educators at the high school. After we know this, then we say, out. What we need to do is we're planning something. We're strategizing something. And as many of you know, uh, every school is required, the state of Indiana, to have an improvement plan. So C stands for School Improvement Plan. Our first goal, and this is not in quarter or fourth, right? Our first goal is the improvement, I think, pick the number eleven here. Uh, meeting or exceeding benchmarks on SAT. How are we going to get there? Our strategy. And again. This seems like a lot here, I could put even more. But these are some of the bigger. Our, our leadership team, which includes um the administrative, the CEO, myself, uh, also our counseling staff. We meet once a week, every Monday morning. At eight forty-five. And we talk about planning, instruction, learning, school safety, counseling, athletics. Discipline, uh, sports, clerical staff. You know, everything under stuff. And we report out. And then we look at each department, how we're going to improve their. CPT, you will hear that in our school, CPT, that's collaborative plan time. Every teacher and administrator, that's everything. Our instructional coaches, you know, we also bring in, you know, our dean at times, or our principal, uh, I mean, I've been there as well. We meet with teachers to talk about any instruction. Instruction that aligns project-based learning, that's aligned to problem-based learning, right? For those of you that don't know what project-based learning means. It's not necessarily something brand new that the new tech network bought. It's just learning through a project. That's it. It's marrying two concepts. Or three concepts, or four concepts. But for those of us that are traditionally educated in public school, uh, we had a book. So all of you remember the title of it. And we had a unit, remember the unit? And then we have chapter, right? Chapter one, chapter two, chapter three, chapter four, remember? And then in the chapters, we had sections, remember? Okay, I'm section one, answer the question, section one, section two, section three. Oh, and then we're going on to chapter two, right? Chapter three, section, and then we have the unit. Our projects are similarly built out. We have a product, a driving question, what's the driving question? And then we have benchmarks, benchmark one, benchmark three, learning activity. Collaborative, I wouldn't say, and then we're grading for our student learning outcome. During SLO, SLO, from grade four, knowledge and thinking. Grade for written communication. Grade for oral communication. Grade for collaboration. And we grade for agents. An agency just moves your growth mindset. How you get through setbacks. Timing. Your um um approach to um how you deal with challenges. There are strands for that under, you know, each one of those student learning outcomes. Another one, I don't really get pretty much of the reason on that, we do weekly grade checks and discussion. So the way it looks in a, in a CPT, we hold CPT on Friday. And each teacher has a plan, remember when teachers have plans on Friday? Well, on Fridays, that plan time, a team of teachers will meet regularly with Rachel and Melissa, our instructor. And everyone is going to have access to the grade because it's not time. And we're going to look and we're going to discuss. And we're going to come up with questions, with issues. And then plan on how do we improve these kids, what's going on? Who do we need to reach out to? The counselor, parent, you know, the parents even know how to log into Echo. How the parents even familiar with it, right? So those are things that are, our eight-step process. This is just a continuous cycle of learning, evaluating, instructing, planning. And here is the word again, interim. When our teachers administer the interim. That's the dimstick test, right, forward and down. How much did Chris learn in these past three or four weeks of instruction and learning? Yep, yep.
I just wanted to put out the look interim, especially for the English and math teams on the eighth. Our ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade teams are aligned directly to the SAT and PSAT. So questions for those are taken from released items aligned to the standards that the teachers have been teaching in that. It's a four-week window. So in that four-week window, whatever standards were taught, we're just asking them to find a PSAT or a SLE related question. That pushes the kids a little bit harder getting them exposed to that test as well.
Thank you, Rachel. Yeah, that, and that's, that's a very crucial point.
We're not understanding the question out of road, or the question better out of direct. The learning log is what teachers and us administrators, counselors are learning from those discussions. And how we can be, you know, best uh for this. MPSF processing, again, that means that we're looking at academic attendance, wellbeing, college degree readiness. Those multi-tier systems and forth. Informal and formal ongoing observations of instruction with feedback. So yes, we are uh required to do formal evaluation of teachers and every other employee in the school. But we do informal, on the bridge, observations as well, where we uh go into classroom, walk-throughs, uh, to check in with teachers, check in with kids. And then we can give instant feedback. It could be on a sticky, it could be a quick email, it could be a conversation, I like that. You know, point one, point two, point three, or if it was something that we thought was a little different and maybe didn't align. We'll say, I wonder about this strategy. Can you tell me anything? Uh, so that's the first. Um, yep, so uh, again, increased focus on the population of students, especially need ELL. Um, curriculum alignment, ensuring that our curriculum is aligned, you know, nine to twelve. Uh, and then, you know, we're also wanting to have this as well, to have, you know, people, um, and. Uh, learning center instructional practices, high-quality, you know, PBL, PRBL instruction. And then I also mentioned what the entire um readable English and English and math uh for that as well. Goal two, again, all learners will continuously show academic growth. And this is just a recap of some of the strategies that we're using uh for goal two and uh for one. Goal three is providing positive and equitable environment for our divisions. But then, you know, it starts, we'd like to say it starts with us. Uh, because we need to plan for all the different departments. Uh, in order to ensure that um someone has their thumb on what needs to be improved. Because one person, whoever you are, won't be able to have your thumb on everything. So that's why we try to break it up and make it manageable. And then we report to each other and our team during our leadership meeting in order to, you know, evaluate ourselves. And then that way, we're able to better evaluate the learning process, um, you know, properly. Uh, again, through our MPS, a team that meets weekly, this is a different team that meets weekly. In addition to our CPT, discussing, uh, need the data. Uh, these are some of, again, the supports uh that we have. That's the online students uh that I talked about before. Uh, and then our entire support team. So this is again, our administrators, for guidance, counselors, all the school community liaison. We have another uh position at the school that is grant-funded. Uh, that helps with reaching out to families uh for any needs that they may have. Uh, whether, for example, uh, if they're unable to get their kid to school. Is it transportation? Uh, is it, you know, load? Uh, and our local liaison uh finds them resources, be able to assist them and help them along. Social workers, teachers consistently monitoring and active. So graduation requirements. I think, I think most of us, maybe with respect to the two, were pre-like I-Step testing graduation. I know why. So all I needed was to ensure that all my teachers that come in high school, they be straight, so. Uh, so prior to the year two thousand. In the state of Indiana, you just have a test. You got your credit. So if you pass X number of years of English, math, science, and solo studies elective, you're done. Right? But then we got into high stakes testing. And the state said, wait a minute, public schools, we're going to give the kid the test. And ensure that they're learning what we believe they should be learning. And then came I-Step. So we had two buckets for about twenty minutes, two thousand bucks. So they had to pass the I-Step. So it would get your credit and then pass the I-Step. And if you didn't pass the I-Step, then we had an opportunity to uh put in for a waiver for a different, we had to have a reason. Did they show growth? They take the test a million times. Uh, was there other, were there other circumstances that prevented that student to be able to have that? And then the public and parents uh got sick and tired of just that one-time shot test. So this is a parent. Uh, it's not equitable for some of our kids. Uh, and especially in students or communities with higher free or reduced populations. Uh, it was showing inequality, you know, on parents. So the state got away with that. So now they created a graduation path. And so currently, our graduation requirement, after rebound. And so again, you get your four credit. Employability skills means either project, you're involved in some sort of project-based learning, service-based learning, or employment. Many, all of our kids qualify for project-based learning because we're project-based learning. We also have service-based learning that falls under any type of service that the student uh um. It's, it's, it ends, so for that, like, um, any student that's involved in that life, that's a service to the school. And by the way, we'll get another experience, about a third of our student population, a third, did involve. Those are high levels. Um, and then the third one are full secondary readiness. So that means, did you receive benchmark score on the SAT or the ACP, you know, the SAT? Um, did you get the test score on the ad staff that's that, there you go? Um, and then, uh, do you qualify as an international backglow or you have that, many. Uh, or are you a concentrator uh for a CPT course? Uh, career technical education course? We have many CPT courses at the high school. We have ELTW, I don't know what it's called. Project lead the way. And we have the BioMan program to lead projects. So our BioMan program, students take at the freshman level, intro the bio. At the sophomore level, they take the human body systems course. Junior level, they take uh medical intervention. And then they take capsule course, or senior level, BioMan program, innovation. And that qualifies for a CPT course. We also have here, CPT courses, and we have physical courses, um, you know, if I don't hit too much balance. But that's how they meet bucket three. And that's how our, we're able to maintain a high graduation rate. Because they're meeting the benchmark that the state uh requires to be, to stay in there. And we were always set up with them when they came up with this program, or this uh requirement. So when they came out with this, I thought, wow, that's great. But there were schools across the state that weren't set up that were thinking, we now have to start sending all of our kids to that. Three seven, uh, in order to, what? What I just fire a roll with your whip, this, these are all the credits that they need. An English grade note, English math, science, social studies, direct elective, TIBAD, and then law, or any other. Uh, I don't want to go back over there. And we do have, you know, students of our technical honor, former, more technical honor. We have to receive a few more credits and some additional classes. Uh, this is that second bucket, again, project-based, service-based, work-based, and watch by pride. Uh, because of how uh students are able to demonstrate these uh experiences there for demonstration. So they can do it in project, portfolio, resumes, videos, papers. Remember at the beginning, when I started, uh, we have to have a host of um different opportunities for students and for us to be able to demonstrate what it is we need to do. It's not just our, you know, back in the nineties research paper and we have it. Those are our full secondary readiness competencies. This is where I was talking about, CPT concentrator. Our speed test, that's the average, uh, in our biomedical, bi biomedical uh science. In order to receive that full secondary competency, it's the third bucket. These are all the AP dual credit and Indiana College Core course that we offer. There are AP course offering, TIBAD, Biology, Computer Science Principles, English Language Competition, English Literature and Competition, Freak Now, US Government Politics, US. These are our dual credit, our partnership with IUD Tech. Quantitative, quantitative reasoning is just a math course at the senior level that we can offer. Intro to Psychology, uh, we started that this year. Intro to Communication, we add English competition in American way. So these are some of our highlights, celebrations, morning pride. We have a triple-A program that, um, is presented in charge of, triple-A means academics, attendance, and agency. Every month, a student has an opportunity to meet those benchmarks and then we celebrate at the end of the month. So they get, you know, a whole, uh, maybe hour and a half, let's say, hour and a half, two hours. They get to go to the gym, play some basketball, some popcorn, and drink, uh, and, you know, periodic. Typically, we'll get about a hundred, hundred and fifty kids that'll meet the benchmark. So we're usually why we start that at the beginning. So, we're equal while we start that at the beginning of each month, they start with a green slate. Because we don't want to keep the kids in the dungeon, right? If you're not stuck in September, it doesn't mean that you don't have a shot in October or a shot in November. And we've had kids that have been able to, you know, kind of taste that and it tastes good. And so, they tried real hard. And that's why I said, those relationships, you know, building things that we do intentionally are very important. Student of the Month Program, students of colleges, universities. As a matter of fact, we just had one. Friday, we took our seniors to B N W. B N W for college business of our seniors. We have instant decision day. That's kind of a new day that they have with high school students where they know with colleges and they have. Our, some of our other things that we do, like our M B K program. Jobs you can step in. I think that's smart. So, that's like run deeper program that we have at high school that are part of. We have, in addition to colleges, you know, very well, what the parent, the conflict with principal forward. conflict with principal conversations we had. One of the parents asked me, said, Chris, you know, this is very important, and all of the colleges that you're gonna bring in, you know, take kids. What about the things that are in training? Like absolutely. We take construction trade strips as well. As a matter of fact, we had one at Lake County a few weeks ago, November. And all of the local, you know, trades are there. And you'll see some pictures of that. But, you know, many of our students take advantage of that. Things like state secretary, I'm better than they program, they getting, actually, we had a phenomenal and kind of, they giving dinner because of the light. And our kids and staff were able to just, you know, they remain calm, cool, and collected. They were, they have a lot of food, like, we're at the beginning, it's like, we're. So, you know, they just said, hey, let's start making some like gold plates, wrap them up, went outside, like, school was completely like pitch black. So, they were using their phones at one. And they, you know, were going outside and as people were coming up, you know, they just tried to come and get food. And they were, and they were out. So, we were able to get a lot of that food out. And we wanted it the last, I think it was Friday or seven thirty or something. Seven fifteen, we're all like, okay, we're gonna get out of here, guys. Likes them. So, just time to clean up. We just had our winter holiday concert with that Friday. We have BAP stuff and for free application, federal student aid. We have B N W. And grammar. B N W will be here tomorrow all day long. We have nice community movie night that we started over the past few years. For new STEM business. This is brilliant. And P N W comes in, the engineering department. And they put on this great display of just, you know, engineering project here at our gym. And the kids, you know, staff go through and, you know, look at some of those things like motorized cars, heating science, biomedical. Where they, they see like, you know, like, the brain is like. What, how the most, you know, gadgets are built. And, and so, kids really like that and they're inspired by that. In that space, we have academic awards around me. And again, that was our graduation rate of twenty-three point four. We've held in the ninety percent for many years. And again, that's because, you know, we have a staff that, you know, zero is in everything. Because, that I just want to quickly mention, you know, we have about a hundred and fifty seniors every year, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty. One kid is a. So, if about ten kids are not meeting graduation requirement. But we get about ninety kids a year. And so, that takes a lot of work. It's not just patting or patting. Any of you, it takes a lot of work. Given what we are taking from everything that I just described, from, you know, some of the social emotional problem that's in that. You know. So, absolutely, you know, I think it's a celebration for our entire. This is just our athletics overview of how many events we have. And this is not a student's bring it, three hundred and thirty-two events on the other sports. We have eighteen sports that are offered with a bubble. Hundred and forty-nine of them. These are some of our renovations that we have and add and add. And we're looking forward for our gym renovation. This is a picture, not a shirt. Some of our own, B N W. And this is one of our pop and square pool. And then there, this is our first generation free college celebration, free office. The front net, when our kids went to the train. I don't know if it's questions or I'm probably talking.
We can see your passion. We really appreciate it. Let's give him a round of applause. Chris, good job. Thank you so much. And Christine, don't mind the other alone. Let's give his team a round of applause.
This is Sarah, this is Coach Sarah.
Okay, let us move on into our board meeting.
That's all right. You did an amazing job this week. We have all the information we need about the high schools on next year.
Do not judge me by my success. Judge me by how many times I fell down and got back up.
Hey, I'm gonna do the public comment. We did not have anyone sign in, but just record, public comments should remain respectful for everyone. There is a three-minute time limit. We will not discuss personnel issues or student issues. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you find that your questions are concerned or not answered in this meeting, you are free to schedule one with Dr. Shirley. Please be necessary to schedule an appointment.
Thank you. Moving right into questions. You recommend Linda Fulmer, first to be a ten-year, one-twenty-hour master. Teach English at the Foreign Language Certification for Intercation with a Central Conference. You recommend Adrian Johnson, first to be in the university, high school, university. Course for twenty-twenty-four, fall of September, exchange pay for high abilities degree. Recommend Dr. Shirley to the A A S A National Conference of March fifth to the ninth, twenty-twenty-five, more than, uh, for the same title, two A.
May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Deal, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese. Any questions or comments?
I am presenting at the National Conference.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Leeds resignation and employment. All new employment to Lakerish New Tech schools. Tended upon a career extended freshman history background check within thirty days of a career extended job with NCIS. Check within sixty days of effective date, Indian code, twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point five. And Indian code, twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point three. You recommend accepting Aurelia Leon, recognition from the head start building assistant position effective November twenty-sixth. You recommend accepting Inshaar Aronco, recognized from the supervisor position at Lake Ridge Tech school effective November twenty-sixth. You recommend accepting Mary Tego, recognition from the supervisor position at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School effective November twenty-sixth. You recommend Taylor Allenham, be employed as a wrestling assistant coach at Calumet New Tech High School for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five athletic season.
We recommend Javante Williams be employed as a wrestling assistant coach at Calumet New Tech High School for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five athletic season. We recommend Ariana Damka be employed as the wrestling head coach at Calumet New Tech's High School for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five athletic season. We recommend Marisali Alvarez be employed as an E L Aide at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School effective January sixth, twenty-twenty-five. We recommend Sarah Sanchez be employed as a student supervisor at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School effective December twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. We recommend Tiana Velkaska be employed as a math teacher at Calumet New Tech High School effective December ninth, twenty-twenty-four. We recommend Simone Taylor be employed as a student supervisor at Lakerish New Tech Middle School effective December tenth, twenty-twenty-four. Recommend approval of Leeds resignation and employment items.
May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Roberts, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Neese. Any questions or comments?
Comments on items D, E, and F.
Chris Watkins is on.
That's what I was just saying. Cause I have right here, I have Mr. Watkins in the circle.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, are there any more questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. On the new business, we are recommending approving the permission to advertise student bus transportation service for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight. We recommend approving the science and requests for the N C A P, boy credit to Calumet New Tech High School. We recommend approving the community attached science plus the current learning business for the family engagement student service work done for the English learners program during November twenty-twenty-four. We recommend approving the attached list of returning residents coaches at Calumet New Tech High School for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five athletic season. We are recommending approving the attached coaching, science, and modifications. We recommend approving the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five administrative assistance and administration raise. We recommend approving permission for the business manager to conduct end of the year transactions for twenty.
Supervisors, E L Aide, E L Coordinator, and Classroom Aid Pay Increase. We recommend approving the following fundraisers at Calumet New Tech High School. January thirteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five raffle ticket sales for the senior class trip account. January sixteenth through the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five Domino's Pizza discount car sales for the class of twenty-twenty-eight account. January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, double good popcorn sales for the senior class account. We recommend approving the following fundraisers at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School. December sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, Santa workshop sales for the student general account. Recommend approval of the new business items.
Motion by Ms. Neese, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal, any questions or comments? I would say to Mr. Roberts, thank you for that. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Probably went on for six more hours. That's, that's the thing.
That's all right. Okay, we're gonna go on to closing comments. Uh, Mr. Roberts.
We're talking first, and you're saying, you know, that's what I'm saying. How will we get there? The last, no parents, no, that includes us being involved with our students and being involved with the school. Don't just count on the teacher, the administrator having an assist all of them. And I still feel that for each child, more with each child.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I'm pretty good at that. Mr. Deal.
Appreciate you and your efforts immensely. I know, I hope everybody might have a good holiday. Why are we celebrating?
Thank you, Mr. Deong. Ms. Neese.
Happy holidays, everyone. Thanks for coming. Do you like this people?
Mr. Roberts, may I?
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to extend a, you know, thank you to everyone in the audience, you know, for attending tonight's board meeting. Chris, thank you for your comprehensive report. But on a serious note, it does show the amount of resources and dedication that the staff of, you know, Calumet High School put in every day for every student. And so, I just, the high school is eating heart of this township. And so, you know, we're glad that, you know, we're gonna have these renovations. Chris talked about the auditorium, failed audios, we don't have the auditorium. And, you know, so, you know, that being said, you know, we had the holiday concert in the gymnasium on Friday night. And just kudos to everyone who participated, facilitated, supervised, you know, it was a packed house and the students were great. I still have, you know, the young gentleman's, you know, guitar, you know, rocking a little song in my head, so that, that was great. So, that being said, everyone have a happy holiday and a wonderful, thank you.
Get it, she really honored teachers and recognized teaching all the good things that they do. Chris, on a serious side, we just want to say, I feel that the high school is in good hands. Each and every one of you are dedicated to the process and it showed in your passion. Each, and every one of you are dedicated to the process, and it showed in your passion and your presentation. I will give you a time next time. But, uh, I feel very confident that the job is going to get done, and your graduation rate every year demonstrates that. So keep doing what you all are doing. Uh, Friday's program, if you were not there, you missed it. It was phenomenal, the entire district participated. The families, uh, showed up and showed out, the gym was completely packed, and I was real happy about that. And so we have to give kudos to the Visual and Performing Arts, uh, Center and their staff, so we're pleased with that. What day does, uh, the Christmas break begin?
December twentieth, I think.
December twentieth, I thought that was right. Okay, so this will be our last meeting before the holiday break. And so we want to send you all with good cheers, we want to appreciate the time we spent from, uh, August to now, it's been good. Uh, let's keep the momentum going, go home, enjoy yourselves, get some fun time, and enjoy your family, and come back ready for January. We have a lot to get done in a short amount of time. I appreciate you all, we had an audience tonight, and it's really nice when our staff is presenting, that they are presenting to someone. Because many nights, we come here and there is no one in the audience, so we appreciate you all. Happy holidays to you as well. And to my board, um, it's been a good year, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to you. Thank you for your support and being here as well. Have a good holiday season, everyone.
Thank you to Mr. B and the high school team for the presentation. And I know you went over a lot of stuff, but being a board member for ten years, you and I both know that there's a heck of a lot more information that you could throw at us. Such as the percentage of special education kids who get to take the eye exam test, which also plays with our graduation rate. I just want to give a shout out to the high school team, because, um, a few years ago, me and the Department of Education said that our high school puts too much time into our students. That sometimes we need to just give up on some of the kids, you remember that conversation? Because you think that maybe your, your staff members are stressed because you are putting too much time and effort into some kids, sometimes you just have to let them fail. And our staff will not do that, and I really appreciate everything that you do for our kids. I know sometimes you go on social media and you see negative comments about how poor of you are, don't believe it. I appreciate every single one of you, and I know how hard you fight for our district and our kids. And hope you're enjoying the vacation. Have a great holiday season, thank you all for coming, have a good night, and may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Roberts, also, Mr. Roberts has been an honor serving with me the last few years. Mr. Bacon, I look forward to serving with you on the board next year. May I have a second, please? Second by Ms. Neese, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.